Well, you know, I'm at least gonna do all of the preliminary stuff while we wait for the others. So if you're ready to go Shelby, I'm ready to go. Excellent. All right. Good evening, everybody. So this is the November 13th meeting of the City of Kalamazoo Zoning Board of Appeals. We are a city, or a volunteer advisory board appointed by the city commission. We're gonna take a roll call, but we're expecting two other members to arrive a bit later. So why don't you take the roll Pete, and we'll add them in when they get here.
Vanden Homburg.
Here.
Work.
Here.
Holder.
Here.
Han.
Here.
Harrington.
Uh, here you go.
And McReynolds.
Yeah. I'm gonna make a note on that for the moment. Okay. So, uh, any changes or announcements to the posted agenda?
No changes or announcements.
Excellent. Any, let's see, we need to move on to approval of the minutes. Are there any corrections needing to be made from last month, to, to, to last month's minutes?
I didn't see any.
Excellent. Anybody want to move to approve?
I move to approve. I second.
Any discussion? Nope. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? No. Those pass and are approved. All right. So this is the meeting procedure, and I'll mention something towards the end that may come in, be important here at a certain point. Before we open the public hearings tonight, here is how those will all go down. For each of the applications, the secretary, or one of us, who is not secretary, will read the request into the record. The applicant or represented will have, will then have 10 minutes to come up and to make their presentation, make whatever remarks they want. You'd step to the podium, state your name, you're probably gonna be asked to repeat it and repeat it slowly, and also give your address, and then you have 10 minutes to say whatever it is you need to say. 10 minutes is not a lot of time, so you should probably get to your main points and work from there. After that, a public comment will follow. Same procedure will be done. Come to the podium, say your name, say your address, except you have three minutes. If 10 minutes is not a lot, three minutes is even less, and we're gonna be somewhat difficult on making, and when I say difficult, we're going to make you stick to the three minutes. So make your points and make sure you get to the main ones. From there, we'll be calling comments. Callers may dial 888-382-9556. During that period, your remarks will not be recorded, they will be live. At that point, the public hearing will close, and the board will state and vote on a finding of fact. This vote is not a decision on the request, it is only on the finding of fact itself. The board may then ask questions and deliberate over the finding of fact, asking it of the speakers, of staff, I suppose, any of the, the community members who spoke may also have questions asked of them. At that point, there will be a motion to approve, usually it's a motion to approve the request, at which there would be a roll call vote, discussion, that sort of thing, you'll kinda see how it works. We are normally a board of six members, and you need four affirmative votes for any request to be approved. There are only four of us sitting here, though, and some of you may prefer to wait out until there is a fifth and/or sixth member here, in case you think you're going to have a problem.
I have heard from one of the members, and she is on her way.
Okay. So that would bring us to five, that's probably Ms. Harrington. That would bring us to five. Again, because you need four for approval, nobody's going to, nobody's gonna bat an eye if you prefer to wait till the next hearing if there are only five of us. So, I'm hoping Ms. Harrington appears real quickly. Why don't we have hers read in, have the first, I guess I should take that back. Why don't we take a moment and figure out who's gonna go first? Cause I'm not sure which one of these are gonna get any pushback from any of us, cause we haven't discussed it yet, obviously.
Let me, let me just make a quick phone call.
Yep.
Okay.
So everybody sit tight.
We're going to check the public in Germany. So it's good that, from one, in one respect, it's good that the air traffic controllers should pay.
Yeah. Yeah, pay.
And, and the TSA and everything. So that our flights don't get hurt. We've never been there, we've been to Germany, we enjoy going there, so try to go to some place new when we're over, we're everywhere, go, 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 go. So we tend to go to one or two or three countries at a time. In Europe, it's really easy, you know? So we'll go to one place and fly, find one place and fly out of Germany. But we've done the Germans before, so it's, you gotta have it in other countries somewhere. Yeah, my kids are old. My son, my youngest is 25, he'll be 26 in January. I, I just turned 50.
You did?
I did.
Good job.
Thank you.
I thought you were younger than me.
So, no, like, oh, kids are old. My daughter is like, lives in Louisville, we'll be down there to see her next week. Well, should, we can take the last thing on, since that's just about a time extension.
Everybody see these, what plans?
The one, the very, yeah, we have the time extension.
Oh, oh, yeah. Yeah, let's get that one though. Yeah, same.
Yeah, let's do it.
That's good. Nobody likes to run in rushed. She, that way she can get here. Yeah. And it moves us.
It gets us closer.
Closer than my, my time.
No, I don't, I'm not sure if I'll ever have any.
Really?
My daughter's not, she's not interested in this point. And my son's gotta find a girl, so, still lives at home, and is very much, he just kinda does his own thing.
That's okay, they're not done for it until they're 25.
Yeah. Well, it's kinda stuck in a spot because he got his degree, and then they cut all the government jobs, so all the state level jobs are all full, and it's just, he's kinda been waiting around for something to happen, or go back to school.
What's his degree?
Geology.
Oh, yeah. Oh.
Well, there were city jobs, he applied for some, but got filled by people, which is fine.
I think there's like two geology staff jobs at Western, too. Two.
Yeah.
They're fill, they're full.
Yeah. He's gotta, he's gotta figure something out, but he's got time. I didn't graduate law school, so I wasn't 31, so he's got time.
Yes.
Okay.
This isn't like a, for a public hearing.
No, there is no public hearing, it's just, if, 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 if there feels they, they have just cause for a time extension, then you think we're at the time extension.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, so while we wait for another member to, to arrive, perhaps in about 10 minutes, we're gonna take the one that doesn't actually, we're gonna take them out of order and go to what is number E on the agenda, which is the ZBA number 251121 regarding 1421 North Pitcher Street, where Graphic Packaging International is requesting a six-month extension for the two building setback variances granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals, December 12th, 2024. The extension would give them until June 11th, 2026. Okay, so they're literally right on the edge of expiring. Okay. So what's the, what's the procedure on giving them additional time, Pete?
And the, the procedure is, it's, it's laid out within the staff report, but, but essentially if there is, if the board finds there's just cause for a six-month extension, then the board can vote to approve a six-month extension. The last, I did look up the last one of these we did, it was in 2021, it was for the River Caddis Apartment Complex Development on Gull Road, at Gull and Harrison there, and that was another one that got, got hung up before it got in, you know, between variances and going into site plan review, and the board did approve a six-month extension for those variances related to that project.
Okay.
Do they come in front of us to explain?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they did. Yep, they, they provided a written statement of explanation, they came before the board and then verbally talked through it, and, and then the, the board discussed it and voted on the time extension.
Okay.
So, does Graphic Packaging have somebody who's coming up to speak?
Yep.
Excellent. Come on up, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Name's John Patterson, so I am the project manager for the Automated Warehouse Project for Graphic Packaging. I work for our corporate engineering department, so I'm, you see on my address, I'm out of South Carolina, so I'm here to chat with you about what's going on in our company, give just a couple, couple brief explanations of why we're asking for the extension. As you guys know, when we presented for the variances, we're in the process of designing an automated warehouse project, which will reside on that 1421 Pitcher Street. Since that project, we are actually, we're actually in a lot of, got a lot of projects going on Graphic Packaging, we're in, we actually just started up a brand-new greenfield paper mill in Texas, started up about three weeks ago, completing that project, finished that one up. We also are building another automated warehouse, so we purchased two, one in Texas in our Texaco canner plant, and also the, the facility that we're gonna build here in our Kalamazoo plant. We've also had a surprise, so we had a regulation change in our Macon paperboard facility, where we're having to install a waste treatment system that was not in our capital plans, and it's about a $90 million project, and we have a deadline to get it complete. So because of all that, we, obviously, we have shareholders, we have a capital plan, and with tariff pressures for some of our equipment, which is coming from overseas, cost of finishing up this paperboard facility, we had to make some decisions around some of the optional items in our capital portfolio, one of which is the ARW projects. The, the environmental project in Macon is not adjustable, it's got a dead, targeted deadline with the state of Georgia, and so at that point, we have to make some hard decisions about where are we gonna move our capital spending, and the only project that's not in construction is the Kalamazoo ARW project. So where we are currently in our process, we are continuing engineering, we're actually, we were here this week to do a design review, we're at a 65% design-engineering view, so we're well along the way. Our intention is to submit for site plan review end of first quarter of next year, and we, we were planning to actually submit for site plan review this quarter. We're at that spot, we've got enough information to do that, but we're gonna actually continue to develop that engineering, have everything finalized, we'll actually submit pretty much what's final plans for the project in the first quarter, so there won't be too many changes other than what might be requested of us, and we will actually be working through that site plan review in the first quarter, second quarter of next year with you folks, and then we begin construction, site civil construction will begin in the spring of 2027. Not gonna start digging in the dirt till it gets a little bit warmer, not gonna start in the wintertime, so significant amount of civil work and piling work for the, obviously, heavy warehouse, so we'll start in the spring and do that, and then we'll be getting that construct, construction project and run it to completion. That's our current plans.
Excellent.
Did you say you were going to submit your site plan review first or second quarter of next year?
Yes. Yep.
And then that's gotta be approved before you start your?
Correct.
Construction.
Yes, we'll actually start in the spring of 27, is our current starting point.
Six months gonna be enough?
And so I was gonna say, that was my question, is this six months enough? So maybe Pete can talk about that. What's the timing on all of that? Is six months enough, do you think?
Well, actually, we, we spoke briefly before the meeting, and, and yes, you know, as long as the, the site plan review process is started by Graphic Packaging, before that six-month deadline hits, you know, then they're, then they're set to move forward. Once they enter site plan review, that activates, that shows that action's been taken on the variance, that the project is now moved to the next review and approval step, so, yeah, it's, it's very feasible for them to, you know, to get, get things wrapped up and get into site plan review within this six-month window.
It's not a shovel in the ground that's gonna trigger that, it's the?
Correct.
Site plan review, okay.
Correct.
So, I don't know if that was your thought, Gary, but that was my thought, is that gonna be enough to put a shovel in the ground? Excellent. Anybody else have any other questions? Should we just take a roll call vote, or do we need a motion to approve that?
It should be a, yeah, we should put a motion on the table to approve this, and that is in the, the recommendations in the staff report, there is no real staff comments for, for a time extension, it's just a matter of the applicant presenting the facts to the board, and the board rendering a decision.
So somebody make a motion. Go for it.
I make a motion to approve the ZBA 25-1121 property at 1421 North Pitcher Street. Graphic Packaging International is requesting a six-month extension for the two building setback variances granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals on December 12th of 2024. This extension will make the variances valid until June 11th of 2026.
I second that.
Excellent. Do we need a roll call vote on that? Probably.
Yes. Vanden Homburg?
Yes.
Work?
Yes.
Holder?
Yes.
Han?
Yes.
There you go, approved for nothing. Congratulations, have a good evening.
Yes, thank you for making the trip up here.
You're welcome, thank you very much for having us.
All right, now we'll, now we'll maybe put a pin in things to await another member. All right, we now are five. We did the last one already on the agenda, so we're on to number one. So, if you'd read the application.
Sure, alrighty. Alright, forgive me, forgive me, I had some car troubles. Alrighty.
We're on this one.
Thank you, okay. An application for a variance for provisions of the zoning ordinance has been filed with the zoning board.
Hold on.
Is it? Hello, sorry, forgive me, everyone, hello. Alrighty. An application for the variance, for a variance for provisions of the zoning ordinance has been filed with the Zoning Board of Appeals by ZBA number 25-11-18, 850, at 850 East Crest Town Parkway, which is C M, CW Holdings LLC, Alliance Metal Recycling is requesting a dimensional variance from Appendix A, Chapter 4.2 Y, number one, for recycling facilities to be located on a parcel totaling .87 acres, where this type of use is required to have a minimum of two acres of land. We have two public responses received, and that's a little bit premature yet. Alrighty. Please note that this request will not change the zoning classification of the properties. Thank you, that's all, alrighty.
Excellent. If the representative from CMCW Holdings wants to come forward, sign in, state your name and address, and please present your request.
But I will tell you that my name is Chance Woods, and thank you for this opportunity to speak for Alliance Metal Recycling.
Pete.
This is actually a similar request to what you heard a couple of months ago, and it hinges on the fact that there's a rather large category for salvage yards, recycling facilities, scrap yards, that takes into consideration some of the more intensive work that some of those places do, like shredding metal, torching things, melting things, lot of outside storage, lot of big, heavy equipment. We don't do any of that. I think Mr. Aldrich did a really nice tidy job of summarizing it in the staff report. We have a very, very simple business model, we basically just acquire recyclable materials, we sort it into categories, we repackage it into larger lots for sale to a buyer, and we ship it out. So we don't do any heavy-duty processing. Additionally, we do it all inside the building. So that kinda sets us apart from needing the two-acre minimum requirement. Additionally, we've been in business in Kalamazoo since 2019, and up until this move, we have been operating out of a much smaller facility, so this is a big improvement for us as a business. That location was less than half of the interior square footage that we currently will be having, and it was roughly, I would say, a tenth of the outdoor space. So while we were able to operate successfully in that space, this is gonna be a lot more breathing room, a lot more growing room. It's also a big step up for the building, so previously this building was an aluminum foundry, they were melting aluminum and pouring it into cast to make new products, we won't be doing anything that intensive there. And so that's a pretty good summation, I know it's been very brief, but if you have any questions about what we do or how we do it, be happy to take them.
Perhaps in a bit. Brief is good, though, thank you, I appreciate it. Did you need her name repeated, anybody?
Chance.
Excellent, thank you.
Why don't we announce, bring our alternate up, Jack Urban.
Sounds great. So we're gonna add, we do have our alternate in the audience, and he was gonna come up and join us, because we're not sure if Mr. McReynolds is gonna join us tonight. Jack, come on up. Come on down. And obviously, the secretary has appeared.
Yeah. You want me to vault?
No, no, you're, you're fine.
Thank you. All right. Once he gets up here, Pete may make some staff comments.
No worries. Hey, how are you? Good. Yeah, thank you for coming, cause...
All right, now that we're resituated, Pete, did you, did staff have any comments on this request?
Yes, staff does have a few comments. My apologies for the running around here, but?
You're good.
We've been able to fill all our seats because our alternate, Mr. Jack Urban, happened to be showing up just to watch the meeting tonight in P... in person, so we've now brought him up to sit with the board, which, which the board chair can do. This particular request, as it was mentioned, it is less than the, the two acre allowance. What, what I really wanted to bring up was the, the way the ordinance is worded. So, the ordinance is very protective when it comes to certain types of land uses. And that's where the fencing of the facility and this two acre minimum comes into play. And the way that category is worded, it's, it covers scrap and salvage operations, storage of inoperable vehicles, and recycling facilities, and wrecking and towing services. So, that group of use, uses all have to have a minimum of two acres of land area and be fenced. Now, most of those uses mentioned, you would assume involve a lot of outdoor storage, specifically for inoperable vehicles in many cases, and that's not the circumstances with Alliance Metal Recycling. The last location where Alliance Metal Recycling was, was leased warehouse space on Palmer Avenue, and everything was completely within the building there, and it was a much smaller site, much smaller building. And now, this new site offers a lot more space within the building to, to keep everything. So, that's where staff, what staff leaned on as far as going through the review criteria, that it really did not have any adverse impacts on the surrounding property owners, that it fit with the character of the area and the M2 zone district. And, wanted to get back to the. So, so staff, you know, is supportive of this request because we feel it, it doesn't, doesn't fit the stereotypical use identified in the ordinance where these additional development standards come into play. However, we would like the board to place a condition on the approval if they go down that road that all the sorting of recyclable materials occurs within the building.
Thank you. Before we turn it to the public comments, what was the address on Palmer?
2015 Palmer Avenue.
Excellent, thank you. You can probably go ahead and have a seat, because somebody may come up and speak in favor of it, somebody might speak against. I will now open it to the public hearing. Those in favor of the request may come up and speak. You have three minutes to do so at the microphone. Going once, going twice. Oh, I know where that is, okay. There's like a auto body, sorry, I can say that later. There's like an auto body shop in that area, too. I know where it is. Excellent. Nobody is speaking in favor? Anybody wish to come forward and speak in opposition? Once, twice? No. Are there any call in comments?
And I'm checking for the call in comments right now. And we have no calls in the queue for this request, so no call in comments tonight.
Excellent. Seeing no other comments, I close the public hearing portion. Do we want to have any discussion or ask any questions of the applicant before we move to the finding of fact?
I have some questions.
Excellent. Of the applicant or of Mr. Eldridge?
Possibly both.
Okay. Now you may come back up, okay. Go ahead, Beth.
I'm not sure who, who can best answer this, but maybe if Mr. Eldridge and Ms. Woods, if you could speak a little bit. You know, I think this is great, it all makes sense. I understand, you know, I'm on board with the whole special needs of this and the opportunity to have all items inside. What concerns me is the fact that you're supposed to have two acres, now we're going down to one. The noise. I like that it, that there's going to be a clause that, because it's a non-stereotypical usage, and, you know, that's great. What about the, the sorting, the noise involved? I mean, you're not going to be compressing and melting, melting of the aluminum and crushing and things like that.
Right. So, it's not going to be, you might be more familiar with the larger yards like Kalamazoo Metal Recycling, you know, where you have a great big shredder and they dump cars in it. We're not doing that kind of thing. We, essentially, we have a large warehouse that's full of individual bins, you know, if you're familiar with like the size of a Gaylord or an IBC tote. And so, you'll have, this bin has alternators in it, this bin has starters in it, this bin has copper in it. But we're not actually taking an alternator off of a car. We're getting those. We get our materials two primary ways. We go to accounts and service them, so like auto repair shops, larger mechanical contractors, you know, plumbers, electricians, and we do pickups there and take it back to our warehouse and sort it. We also have accounts that will bring material to us, and those are just also, again, mostly tradespeople, mechanics, electricians, plumbers. You also are available for community members to come in who maybe are doing home renovations and have some wire that they've got, or they're cleaning out their garages or repairing their own cars. But no, the, the noise would just be essentially moving things from one bin to another or loading them onto a truck.
Thank you for the clarification, that's great. Okay.
I'm assuming 2015 Palmer has got different zoning than, which is why we're getting a request for a variance here as opposed to over there.
This, that would be in the M2 zoning also, the general manufacturing. The reason that there is, there was not a variance at the Palmer location is because it is a large site with multiple tenants in this warehouse building. I don't, honestly, I don't know offhand if it's two acres. It is a massive.
It's, it's got a lot of building and.
Yeah.
Dur, is it Dura Metallic, whatever the name of that company is now. Surf, Flow Surf?
Flow Surf, yeah.
Across the street.
So, yeah, so the only other thing I wanted to mention, the difference between that other request, the Flowers Automotive Recycling, is that, that was, there was a use variance involved with that case because that was the M1 district, and this is the M2 district. So, this is, this is not the light manufacturing. This is, this, this particular property is already in the general manufacturing, the heavier manufacturing zone district, M2. So, we are simply talking about this, this acreage minimum.
For that zone district, or is it, can you help me understand?
Yes, yes, what we, yeah, we're, we're talking about just the acreage minimum for certain types of land uses that are typically, you know, that's the right term, typically involve outdoor storage, typically involve inoperable vehicles in most cases, or automotive parts storage that in many cases is outdoors. And I was, I was, you know, that's why I was reading the, that definition of what falls into this category requiring these additional requirements of fencing of the facility and the two acre minimum.
And for the zone, for the zone, not for the business. The zone, if you do this type of business in this zone, it has to have two acres.
No, 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 no. So, so those, so these types of businesses have two additional development standards they have to meet. And, you know, and, and the one, the one is, is the, the two acre minimum and then the fencing around it. If you're asking where our, you know, recycling facility is allowed to be located, it is the, it is the M2 zone district. So, that's, that's why last time for Flowers Automotive Recycling, they had to overcome that hurdle of the, the use variance first. Does that, that clarify it a little bit better?
I think so.
Excellent. Any other questions before finding a fact?
Mr. Eldridge, I would just, just for the sake of clarity in the notes, what I, what I hear you saying is that, that, let's see. Alliance Metal Recycling, they are already in an M2 for the heavy industrial.
Correct.
Yeah, they're, yeah, okay.
They, they are a permitted use in the M2 zone district.
Okay.
We are just talking about development standards that apply to this particular type of use.
Because she's saying they don't need that much space.
Right. But, but yeah, that's, yes, because of the, the, the way their recycling operation.
Yeah. That's what I'm asking.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I was asking.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Excellent. Sounds like you need to make a motion on the finding of fact, then. Oh, yeah, you can go and have a seat again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. I move that the finding of facts for 850 East Crosstown Parkway shall include all information included in the notice of public hearing dated October 29th, 2025, and the agenda packet staff provided for this request. Thirteen notices of public hearing were sent, and two responses were received as follows. Ronald Weiser, owner of 833 East Crosstown Parkway, provided a letter opposing the request. Kevin Howard, or Louis C. Howard Incorporated, owner of 844 East Crosstown Parkway, provided an email of support. A public hearing was held before the board and public comments were accepted, and below is the overview. All right, CMCW Holdings, on behalf of Alliance Metal Recycling, representative Ms. Chance Woods spoke about the organization, the facility. Essentially, what they do is they acquire materials that are, that are no use for recycling, such as trucks, metal parts from remodels, housing, things like that. They are requesting a smaller space because they, this new operation doesn't need to have a full two acres. It's not going to be the traditional scrap yard with acres and acres of broken down metal cot trucks and parts and things like that. What's kind of tricky with this, according to staff, and it, it all makes sense, they, they could, they, they meet the requirement, or they could have less than two acres. It's very viable for them because their scrap salvage is going to be much smaller, and everything that they have is going to be inside. The items that come to them are going to already be broken down, so you're going to have people coming in with parts and pieces of, I guess, copper, metal, things like that. It's not going to be broken down trucks that they have to take into a crushing machine and pack everything down. They are going to be receiving parts and pieces, or they're going to send their trucks out to their customers, pick things up, bring them in inside, and then put them in bins. So, it's not going to be giant, you know, semis and forklifts and the smashing and the crushing and the, the melting of metals. Staff also recommends that, if the variance is approved, that all sorting must occur within the building. There can't be any sorting outside. Zero people spoke in favor, zero spoke in opposition of the request, and there were zero call ins. And just as a friendly reminder, as an, as an FYI, that this property is already in the M2 designation, that it's already in a heavier industrial usage area.
I support the finding of fact.
Excellent. Do we need any discussion? I, I do have a question for Pete that's more just curiosity, because she mentioned this used to be an aluminum foundry. Would that be an allowable use now under the zoning? In an M2?
Yes, it would be, in the M2.
Is there like a space requirement on a aluminum foundry that you know, can think of?
Well, the, the M2 zone district has perimeter setbacks of 25 feet, so it's intended for more intensive industrial uses and manufacturing uses. And so, there's a, like, essentially a, a built in buffer with the 25 foot, but, but, but yes, yes, this would be the zone district where you would, such a use.
But that wouldn't, would that have to have, that wouldn't have to have a two, two acre requirement or anything on its property size, would it?
No, no, it would not.
That seems kind of odd that a recycling plant or recycling facility like this would require more space than an aluminum foundry. Anyway, that's not going to affect my request at all, it's just curiosity that she mentioned it.
Don't stress Pete out.
No, I'm not. It's good for him. It's good for everybody, right? No, I like, I like the use, and I think it's a perfect example of why you grant variances in the first place. I agree with the staff report, and obviously, for consistency's sake, we approved this kind of a variance two months ago on a similar spot, I think right in that general area. So, for consistency's sake, I have to support it. Anybody going to vote now? No? Or anybody want to speak against it? Sounds like we're ready to just take a vote.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just procedurally, did we do a voice vote on the finding of fact?
Oh, did we not? Uh, yeah, we, you're right. Just jump right to the end, Pete. You just don't like knowing that he was dead all along, do you? All right, let's take a vote on the finding of fact. We got, we got the motion, we got a second. All those in favor of adopting that finding of fact, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? None, so that carries. Somebody, please make a motion to approve the request.
I make a motion to approve the request.
Is there a second?
I second.
Everybody seconded.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Are we going to consider the condition that staff has put forth?
I'm, I'm assuming the request, oh, sorry, you're right.
We do have to, we do have to add conditions separately, and I know that means we've got to.
Well, I think you can make a motion to approve the request with the conditions stated by staff or recommended by staff.
I'm going to let Charlie chime in here, because I think we have to make a.
Yeah, the movement can amend that and add it or approve that, of that amendment, and then it will be a motion to approve the request with the condition.
So, then the simplest thing is Beth just amends her request to include the conditions. One of the seconds just accepts the change, and then we move on.
Perfect, okay. All right. I make a motion to approve the dimensional variance from Appendix A for the recycling facilities to be located on a parcel totaling .87 acres, where this type of use is required to have a minimum of two acres, provided the condition that all of the sorting must occur inside the building.
Do one of the seconds want to accept that? Thank you, Jack has seconded the request.
I second that.
Now, I've already said what I needed to say. Did anybody else want to say anything else at that point? Fantastic. Then, Pete, I think this is where you got to take a roll call vote. Correct.
And we'll start, excuse me, we'll start on this end of the dais with Han?
Yes.
Urban?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Holder?
Yes.
Wark?
Yes.
Vandenhamburgh?
Yes.
Excellent. That request is approved 6-2-0. Thank you very much to the CCW, CMCW folks. All right, moving on to number two on the agenda. If you want to read that request.
You've got it. All right. An application for a variance for provisions of the zoning ordinance has been filed with the Zoning Board of Hills by, ZBA number 2511-19, at 1015 and 1021 East Michigan Avenue, and 502 and 524 Riverview Drive, and 1014, 1018, and 1024 Sherwood Avenue, Indian Trails Inc. The applicant is Indian Trails Inc., and they are requesting the following variances. Number one, a use variance from Chapter 50, 50-4, 4.412H, to authorize the expansion of the Indian Trails facility and bus storage into the west half of the property at 524 Riverview Drive, where oversized vehicle-related businesses are not permitted. Number two, a dimensional variance from Chapter 50, 50-8.5A, 3A, to authorize installation of a new chain link, excuse me, chain link fence along the property frontages of Riverview Drive and Sherwood Avenue, where chain link fences in the front yard is prohibited in all zone districts. Number three, a dimensional variance from Chapter 50, 50-8.5C, 1A, to authorize installation of ten, of a 10-foot tall chain link fence along the property frontages of Riverview Drive and Sherwood Avenue, where only six-foot fencing is permitted in the front yard areas. Please note that this request will not change the zoning classification of the properties.
Excellent. Whoever is the applicant, please come forward, sign in, state your name, address, and present your request. Anybody for Indian Trails? There we go.
Ten minutes. Appreciate seeing every.
She can't hear you.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
She's got us. There you go, now we can hear you.
There you go.
Sorry. Just that, watching you all, you know, the civic board, you know, on their feet and acting proactively to get the, the meeting going this evening was, was nice to see.
Thank you.
He said we were entertaining.
Well, maybe a little, but yeah, I mean, it was great to see, right? Like, you know, we didn't just shut it down, right?
Excellent.
So that was great, and appreciate it. My name is Carl Ryder, with Noak &amp; Faust. I'm here with Mr. Chad Cushman, president of Indian Trails, to represent Indian Trails on this request. We have reviewed the staff report, and as items, request number one and two go. Briefly, on number one, in 2015, we did a project with Indian Trails where we did an expansion to their facility. I think, is everybody aware, the property that we're talking about has been reviewed. At that time, there was that retail, I guess, retail structure on the corner of Sherwood and Riverview Drive, that was not included in the variance request at that time of the several parcels that make up the Indian Trails facility. So it was excluded at that time. We find now that actually half of 524 Riverview is within the fenced area, but 524 was excluded from the previous approvals. I think, just to kind of bring that whole property, right, into some sort of inclusion is the appropriate thing to do, and, and discussing this with planning staff, further action may be to combine these parcels into one parcel so that we have a little bit easier time moving forward. So that's just kind of the quick background. Appreciate staff's support on item two. Item three, in reading the staff report, may or may not be supported by my staff at this point, and the dimensional variance to the 10-foot height. Hopefully, everybody can see the documentation that we provided, that there is an existing 10-foot fence now that bisects 524. There is an existing 10-foot fence that encompasses the whole Indian Trails property in its entirety. I'm going to let Mr. Cushman come up and speak to the importance of the security of that facility.
Good evening. I'm Chad Cushman. I'm the president at Indian Trails. So if you're not familiar with Indian Trails, we're a family-owned company, and we operate from multiple locations throughout Michigan. We have the Kalamazoo location, then we're also based in Owasso, Michigan, and then we also have a facility in Romulus, right near Detroit Metro Airport. In all instances, all of our facilities include 10-foot fencing around the perimeter, contractually, and a lot of people are familiar with our business as a scheduled service operator. Similar to what Greyhound does, we operate out of the downtown Kalamazoo facility as an example. What a lot of people don't know is that we're also a charter operator, and we maintain contracts with many different types of customers, and many of them are professional sports teams, NFL teams, Major League Baseball, NBA teams. Part of the requirement for contracting with those teams is buses have to be secured at all times, even when they are parked overnight. The reason we got those contracts is because after touring our facilities, they know that we have lighting, exterior lighting, we have security cameras at all locations, and we have the security fencing with gates that only people with employee badges or passes can get through. Right now, the Kalamazoo facility has a 10-foot fence all the way across Riverview up to the 524 property. On Sherwood, it has the 10-foot fence all the way up to that corner of the 524 Riverview property. So it would really defeat the purpose of what we're trying to do by only allowing us to have the six-foot fence along that particular property, if you were to follow the staff's recommendation. For us, that one variance is the most important of the three. Without that, we probably wouldn't proceed with this entire project, other than the demolition of the building, because we currently do have a 10-foot fence behind the 524 Riverview building that runs east-west and then north-south. So really, as you look at the plan, all we're trying to do is just bring that fence, extend it up to the property frontage, and of course, secure that entire corner. And in doing so, obviously, we're adding a lot of beautification, some additional purview space that we didn't have previously. There's a lot of other benefits of allowing us to do that, but we can't do any of it if we can't maintain the security of the facility.
Excellent.
And with that, I'll also write my name on here, so you guys have it.
Thank you very much. All right. Are there any staff comments on the request?
Yes, just a few staff comments related to this request. And I'll, I'll speak to the use variance first. You know, and the one thing I wasn't able to ascertain is exactly how long Indian Trails has been located at this site. Does that?
It, it goes back to the 70s. I believe it was 1974 or 1975 when our company acquired the property. Well before my time. I've been there for 26 years, but I know it was well before my time.
Okay, okay. I, I, you know, I knew there had been a number of upgrades and improvements over the years, and properties added to the operation. But I, I could not figure out, like, you know, how far back does this really go? So that, that explains it. Okay, so we're.
And if I could add, so we're a 115-year-old, family-owned company, we're third generation. And in 2025, this year, we were voted number one best bus service by USA Today, comparing to all bus companies in the entire country, including Greyhound and Flix Bus and Megabus. So we're pretty proud of that.
Great, great. Well, yeah, so thank you. Thank you for adding that, filling that historic gap in for me. So, yeah, so we, we, just talking about the use variance, the, the thousand-square-foot building was mentioned on the corner. Metro PCS, I believe, was the last tenant that was in the building. So this, this use variance is related to removing the building and allowing this use that works with oversized vehicles to expand into that footprint of the corner. And what will be in the footprint of the corner will be additional bus parking spaces, a total of four, along with a substantial amount of green space being added with tree and shrub plantings. And that was a, part of the reason why staff was lending support for the use variance was because of the, the pre-existing nature of the facility, the prior approval that had been given in 2014 for the, the last expansion that was done on the, the bus repair building. And, and then some, you know, I guess a larger apron was put in for better traffic circulation and more parking then. So, so this is, you know, this is just a, this is a small expansion of the site. It just happens to be a very visible corner. As was mentioned, though, there is 10-foot chain link fence directly behind the building that's being removed, and that cha, 10-foot chain link fence then runs north to the 10-foot chain link fence along Sherwood and extends the other direction, connecting to the 10-foot chain link fence that runs down Riverview. So, you know, so this, this would be, you know, removing the building, adding the green space and parking spaces, and then erecting the fencing along the, the frontage. And I, and I don't know, it looks like the fence is set back a little bit from the property line, or is it right on the property line? That's not super germane to the discussion tonight, but.
It varies depending on, until it's behind the sidewalk.
Okay, behind the, yeah, it looked like it was set back a little bit from the sidewalk, which is, which is always nice to see. So, you know, so staff is supportive, supportive of the use variance. Staff understands the character of the security fencing and the fact that the chain link already wraps the facility. But there's been no instance in the past where staff has ever supported putting 10-foot chain link fence in a, in a front setback like this. So, you know, but I do, I do understand the unique nature of this operation. I understand these buses are stored outside, which also might be another reason for the, the taller fencing. But, you know, that's, that's just where, after doing the staff review, that's where staff landed. And other than that, I don't have any additional comments.
Thank you. I'll know, I'll know, I will now open the public hearing. If there's anybody in the room who wants to come forward and speak in favor of the requests or requests, they may. None? Anybody wish to come up and speak in opposition? None. Pete's going to go see if there are call-in comments in a moment.
And we're checking for any call-in comments at this time. There are no callers in the queue, so we have no call-in comments related to this request.
Excellent. That being the case, I close the public hearing. I need to not get too far ahead of myself on the finding effect. Do we have any need for additional discussion before we get to the, to help us to make the finding effect? Any questions? No? Excellent. I think, although you're looking like you might.
Actually, I do.
Go for it.
Because I'm just not feeling so good about this. Mr. Eldridge, I just want to make sure, I understand where they're going with this, wanting to shore things up and having some continuity. I'm, I'm looking for clarity, just to make sure that my understanding is correct. So they, they're not supposed to have chain link fence, period. And then now we're looking to have 10-foot high chain link fence in the front yard.
I was going to ask about that, too. So you're not the only one.
Okay, so, because when I vote, I want to make sure I'm being fair, and I'm understanding it. But where my confusion comes in is it sounds like, you know, this west half of the, like, some parts of the property already have the fencing? But yet, we're, our ordinance says they're not supposed to? Yes, I, I'm, I'm confused.
So, so a lot of this, and that, it goes back to the, the history of this site and the age of the operation here. You know, before we had limitations on chain link fencing in the front yard, Indian Trails had 10-foot fencing along the frontage of their property.
Okay.
So it, it, you know, so it was a pre-existing situation. I believe some of it was replaced, or it was slightly expanded in 2014, when that variance was approved, but a lot of it goes back a, a whole lot further than that. And, you know, the, the chain link is on the Michigan Avenue frontage, the Riverview Drive frontage, and the Sherwood Avenue frontage.
Right.
You know, they, you know, they have run that around the site, and that was where, when staff was looking at this, you know, to require what would be now appropriate for a front yard fence, which would be a decorative metal, a vinyl, a wood fence, it actually would look out of character to, to fill in this, just this corner of this facility,
Right.
you know, with a different type of fencing material. If that makes sense.
No, it does.
Yeah, so that's why, yeah, that's, that's why we, you know, we're, we're, we're saying, okay, we understand why chain link, chain link fencing is the, you know.
It's needed, yeah.
The, the, the chosen fence material here.
But that's all the, the professional sports team needs for safety, is the chain link fence?
No, it goes well beyond that.
Okay.
It's, in addition, the security lighting, the security cameras, the security systems that are on the motor coaches, not to get too detailed, but they're all equipped with what, what are called electronic logging device systems that monitor the coaches at all time. If somebody tries to open a door, we have a 24-hour dispatch system where dispatchers are notified that somebody's trying to break into that bus, so.
What aspect of the security detail is the chain link fence, is my question? Because you said you would scrap it if you guys, that's the most important.
No, what I, what, what we said is we would, if we weren't able to extend the current 10-foot chain link fence,
The current.
beyond where it is right now. So right now, it sits behind the building that's going to be demoed. So if we weren't able to put it up on the frontage of the property, we would have to keep what's existing right now, demolish the building, and not do anything else.
Is that what you're asking, Beth?
No, I just want, no.
No, I understand. I just, I was confused about, I guess I just, yeah, I'm all set now. I just, before I vote on something, I just want to make sure, because it's like, am I understanding this correctly? That the fencing is already high, it's already there, but this one section?
Yes, and I could not tell you exactly when it was installed, but I've been with the company for 26 years, and when I started, it was already up.
Right.
So.
Okay.
And to put it into perspective, too, right now, if you were to look at the entire perimeter of all of the lots, I mean, we're only talking about probably another less than 10% of the entire perimeter of the property that we're looking to add the 10-foot fence.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
All right. Let's move on to the finding effect. Who's our finding effect person? That's, take it away, Gary. For yours.
I move that the finding effects for 1015 and 1021 East Michigan Avenue, 502 and 524 River Drive, 1014, 1018, and 1024 Sherwood Avenue shall include all the information included in the public notice dated October 29th, 2025, and the agenda packet staff provided for this request. Forty-six notices of public hearing were sent out. There were zero responses. Public, public hearing was held before this board. Public comments were accepted as additional documents and voice messages as follows. There were zero speaking in favor and zero speaking against, and there were zero call-ins. For Indian Trails, Mr. Carl Ryder spoke on behalf of Indian Trails, and he had mentioned that the the facility opened its doors in Kalamazoo in 1974. There had been a lot of previous work done, and now they want to combine parcels and turn everything into one property. Mr. Chad Kushman also spoke on behalf of Indian Trails. He mentioned that all facilities have a ten-foot fence, and that's for security purposes. Contracts with clients must ensure security because there are many sports teams that contract with Indian Trails. Staff comments. Staff supports the, the use variance. They like the green space. They like the fact that there were prior approvals on this property, and this is a small expansion, scope of things. But staff does not support the, the ten-foot fence. However, there is a ten-foot fence already on site, and it it has been grandfathered in, and it it covers the majority of the property, and I think Mr. Kushman said that it, they only need about another 10% to complete the ten-foot fence surrounding the property. And that is the finding effect.
Thank you. Anybody?
Thank you, Gary. Nice job.
Excellent. Any second on the finding effect?
I'll second it.
Excellent. Let's take a vote on that before I run off on, and start saying my opinion on things, because we have to do this one, I think, in a very dedicated way. All those in favor of adopting the finding effect, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nay. So, before I ask if we have any motions, I feel like somebody's gonna remind me, these have to all be voted on individually, so we need three separate motions, three separate seconds, and three separate votes on the specific request. I believe that's correct. So, whoever's gonna make the motion, and I would ask for that motion, you can make three motions, and whoever's gonna second, I guess if you want to second them all, you can. If you're gonna second two of them, or we can do these one at a time.
Just one, one at a time.
Yeah, if I could just comment on that, it would be good to make the motion, second the motion, have the discussion, talk about the justification or lack of justification for that variance, and then vote on it, and then repeat that process with, with the next one, because we have the use variance, and then we have the two fencing-related variances.
Fair enough. So, who's gonna make the first motion?
I make a motion to accept the use variance request for Indian Trails 1015 and 1021 East Michigan Avenue, and 502 and 524 River View Drive, 1014, 1018, 1024 Sherwood Avenue. I've said too many. All right. I'm doing the first one, so which address should I?
My only, my only reason for chiming in is you said, you said "accept." So you make a motion to approve the variance?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, okay. Yep, but I know, there's a whole bunch
Right.
of addresses.
So, to approve it, she needs to read number one there.
And that's what I'm just getting ready to do. Thank you, Mr. Eldridge. Okay. I make a motion to accept a use variance from chapter fif- I make a motion to approve a use variance, now I'm all nervous, okay. I make a motion to approve a use variance from chapter 50, 50-4.412H, to authorize the expansion of the Indian Trails facility and bus storage onto the west half of the property at 524 River View Drive, where oversized vehicle-related businesses are not permitted.
I support.
Excellent. So, any discussion needed on this one from anybody? By hearing none, jumping to it. This variance for this particular, how, do we know what the size of this particular piece of property is? You said it was about 10% of the overall amount of... Or is that just the fence?
Yes, that was just-
That was just the fence?
Yeah.
Okay. But granting the use variance essentially is going to bring it in line with the use variance the board gave them in 2014? Is that right, Pete?
Yes, yes, it would be in line with that. The, what I had down for, for rough calculations, for the fence extension, which would give you an idea of the dimension of the area of the property being absorbed in with the facility, it was 75 feet along Sherwood Avenue and approximately 95 feet along River View Drive. So, 75 by 95.
Okay.
To give you an idea of the, the area.
So, you mentioned in the staff report, this spans four different zones. I'm assuming for sure that you couldn't do this, I don't know what the 524 River View Drive portion falls under. Could you, are you allowed to do the bus storage facility that they're doing, that business? Would you be allowed to do it in any of these four zones by right?
No, no. If, if a new facility like this came into the city of Kalamazoo, it would be directed towards the, the M1 or the M2 zone district because of, you know, the, the outdoor storage nature, you know, or outdoor parking of all the buses, and the type of operation with the, you know, the auto, automotive repair of heavy equipment going on. So, yeah, this, yeah, it would, it would be directed elsewhere in the city, but in this case, it is grandfathered in, and, you know, and frankly, does provide a, you know, a solid service to the citizens of Kalamazoo.
Number one in the country.
And at some at some point, this must have been allowed under the zoning on these properties. On one of these parcels, it had to have been allowed at some point without a use variance. Is that correct?
So, the property south of this, that's closer to the railroad tracks, was formerly in M1, which is the, you know, limited or light manufacturing zone district. So, I would speculate that if we go back, you know, three, four decades, the manufacturing zoning probably extended further north, down River View Drive.
Okay. Excellent. Anybody have any other questions you wanted to Pete, or anything you want to say on it?
Okay, we're good.
No? All right. So, I suppose we're ready to take the vote. This needs to be a roll-call vote, and the vote, a yes vote would be to approve the use variance, which is number one.
And we'll start with Vanden Homburg. Yes. Wark?
Yes.
Holder?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Urban?
Yes.
Han?
Yes.
Excellent. That is approved, six to nothing. Please, somebody make a motion on variance request two.
I move to approve ZBA number 25-11-19, number two, dimensional variance.
Excellent.
I second.
Excellent. So, this is about allowing a chain link fence in a front yard where chain link fence is prohibited in the front yard in all districts. Okay. And they're in a weird spot because they've got how many front yards? They've got like three different-
Three, three front yards.
Because they occupy essentially the whole of that block, right? Well, maybe not the whole of the block, but a, that end of it. Okay.
I'll be voting in support of this.
Thank you. Anybody want to speak about it, one way or the other?
Me, too. If we don't, it's gonna be ugly. I think it needs, we need to do it.
Yeah, it's already there.
It'd be ugly if we don't.
You know, it's already there.
Yeah.
They're good customers.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
That I would agree with. Pete, you want to take a vote, or were you adding anything?
Did we get a second on this?
We did have a second on it, absolutely. Thank you.
Just waiting to see if there was any more comments. We're gonna start with you down here, with Mr. Wark?
Yes.
Holder?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Urban?
Yes.
Han?
Yes.
Vanden Homburg?
Yes.
That request is approved, six to nothing as well. Somebody please make a motion on the third request.
I make a motion to prove a dimensional variance from chapter 50, 50-8.5C to authorize installation of a 10-foot-tall chain link fence along the property frontages of River View Drive and Sherwood Avenue, where only six-foot fencing is permitted in the front yard areas.
I support.
Excellent. Pete, I got a question about fencing. Is 10-foot fence allowed anywhere? Just in a general spot in the city, anywhere?
The, the only situation where you would have fencing allowed above eight feet would be for uses in the manufacturing zone district. So, if it was a scrap-and-salvage, you know, towing business, they could have up to 12 feet in height. So, there are circumstances in the city where, you know, where 12-foot fences are permissible. I believe that's what Kalamazoo Metal Recyclers has around their facility. You know, which, well, it's a 12-foot wall. But yes.
You said, thank you, and I figured that. You said the, what are the allowable front yard, we've already said, we've already approved chain link fence in the front yard. You said it was like wood, vinyl, or decorative metal is usually allowed?
Yes.
I'm assuming decorative metal is not like the massive steel panels that they put up? That's more like a wall, you're probably, when you're talking, you're talking like, like a wrought iron-ish kind of fence?
Yes, yeah, yeah, like the, yeah, the aluminum fencing, the decorative aluminum fencing that looks like wrought iron.
Okay.
Or wrought iron itself, but...
Did those people in the industrial areas, is it by right, or did they all have to come in and get variances? The 12-foot, that's by right?
By right.
Okay.
By right. And we did have where else did we allow taller fencing? Hatfield and Lake Street, there was a variance for that trucking operation. It has frontage on three streets, it's right next to Juliana's Restaurant.
Yeah.
And that was-
Oh, is that the one with like the, basically, it's like these big metal panels, right? Is that the one?
Yeah, but that came in for height variance. But that, that is in a manufacturing zone.
That's definitely not decorative fencing.
It is not, yeah.
No, it is not.
So, yeah, there are, there are some examples out there. There's not many, but there are some examples out there.
But we've already figured that they probably have at some point in the past, it was allowed, and they did it, and they're just wanting, okay, I got it.
It's kind of grandfathered in?
What's that?
Yeah. Grandfathered in, yeah. I support it.
Excellent. I have no other questions on it. Did anybody have any discussion they needed to make?
No.
Thank you. Pete, why don't we move to the vote then?
And we'll start with Han for this vote.
Yes.
Urban?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Holder?
Yes.
Wark?
Yes.
Vanden Homburg?
Yes.
Thank you. That is a first to nothing. Congratulations, gentlemen. Goodness. All right.
Yeah.
Yes. All right, let's move on to number four, four, no, it's number three on our agenda, sorry. Thank you for keeping me honest.
Here we go. An application for, should I get going?
Yes.
All right. An application for a variance for provisions of the zoning ordinance has been filed with the Zoning Board of Appeals by Isaac Ogola. ZBA number 25-11-20 at 1327 Sherwood Avenue. Mr. Ogola is requesting a use variance from chapter four, section 4.1, to increase this adult foster care group home from six residents to 10 residents, where medium-group homes, seven, or seven to 12 residents are not permitted in this residential zone district.
Hey, will this change the zoning?
Leave me alone. No, please note that this request will not change the zoning classification of the properties.
Thank you. Would the applicant or their resident, resident representative, please come up to the microphone and speak in favor of the request? Also say your name, and make sure, and write down your name and address.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Isaac Ogola, O-G-O-L-A. I'm here to talk about the application for Sherwood, 1327 Sherwood Avenue. We were notified that the zoning ordinance changed probably in the recent years, but the property was previously used by another operator for adult foster care home with 10-bed capacity. The facility is actually set up for 10 beds right now, and it has three, three bathrooms, three full bathrooms in-house, and as adult, adult foster care homes, we have full-time leave-in staff who monitor, who take care of these residents, plus an administrator who is directly responsible for the safety and the well-being of the residents, and reports directly to LARA and the licensing authority for the foster care homes. We, with the current ordinance of six, we, we believe that we are going to operate way below capacity and the abilities presented by this facility based on the previous owner operations. So, and also, we know that there's a big shortage for facilities like this in our communities, and this is really what, this is the problem we are trying to solve. So, we reached out to our neighbors. I, I walked to each of my day neighbors, requesting, asking them if they had any issues with the previous owner, with the previous operations that was having 10 individuals living in there, and they didn't have any concerns at all, and most of the neighbors have lived in there for 50 years, 40 years, I mean, 10 years, I think the list has lived in the area for 10- I mean, ten years. I think the list has lived in the area for ten years. And they provided very positive letters of support, and they didn't have any reservations, and I attached those letters to my applications. Also, the, the facility is actually set up with a fire alarm system that is monitored by IRL and the police department. So, it's a very, we've made it very conducive for the residents. And I was particularly pleased by the board staff for putting together a very beautiful report on this facility. And I, I, I believe that the current use, the proposed use is in line with the, with the strategic goal of the ordinance basing on, and I completely agree with what was written in the, in the report. So, for those reasons, I, we are here to request a variance on the use of this facility to allow us to give this service to the community. And as, as mentioned, actually, the facility is in a very, with the existence of the facility, it, it presents a very lively outlook for this neighborhood. And I think that's what the neighbors want. In fact, talking to some of the neighbors, some of them would have been here, but because the meeting is very late, I think they decided and they were not able to make it here. But they, they enjoyed the presence of people living in this place because they used to hang out, some of them. So, when the facility was closed down, it presented, you know, a different atmosphere. So, by us bringing it back, I believe it's going to create, get back this neighborhood to, to the spirit with which, you know, a neighborhood should be, you know, lively and with people and not feeling abandoned. So, it's my humble request that you consider our application.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Excellent. Staff, any, any requests that, you wish, request? Do you have any comments to make with respect to the request?
Yes, staff has a few comments to make, and I'll just, I'll just touch on some of the findings based on the review criteria. The first one is as far as the zoning, you know, the enforcement of the ordinance as written for the RD nineteen district would not allow for full use of the facility. It is an eight-bedroom adult foster care home. It's set up with bathrooms on all levels, kitchen facilities, and then, of course, the fire safety equipment is in place. But that was one thing that staff leaned on was the, you know, was, you know, the existing floor plan and what it, what it was built out for as a, you know, special circumstance. And, and also the, the history of this. So, from what I could find, this is just happened to be one of those months where I was digging for historical facts on the Indian Trails site and this particular property. So, what I could find was at least, you know, that there was an adult foster care operation there for the last thirty-five years. And so I looked at the old ordinance, trying to make sense of how did this come to be? That it's essentially would fall in the medium adult foster care group home category. And it looks like, the way the old ordinance reads, that, you know, adult foster care was, was permissible. Wasn't specific to small, medium, or large group homes. So, you know, I, I think what was going on there was a legal-conforming use for many years up until twenty twenty-three, when the prior owner decided to shut the facility down and let the license expire. And then, when, when I was contacted about opening it back up for ten individuals, I said, well, the ordinance is up to six, but does not allow for a, a capacity level of ten. And so, yeah, so just to kind of touch base on that history. And this, this is a use variance. Even though we're talking about a numerical standard here from six to ten, because those are different use categories in the land use table, that's what makes this a use variance, because we're going from a, a small group home to a medium slash large group home, which is the next land use category. So, that's, that's why it's a use variance and not a dimensional variance. And other than those comments, I also wanted to note, because we have had other adult foster care homes before us that have asked to expand the numbers in the past, this particular site is not buried in a neighborhood like there was one previously in, in the Burke Acres neighborhood that was way, way down a residential street. This one is across from an apartment complex. It's roughly two, two blocks from East Main Street. So, it is very close to a, a Main Thoroughfare, which were other supporting items that lent, that staff leaned on looking at their review criteria in order to support this use variance. So, we do not feel it is out of character with the neighborhood and the letters of support, which two of those letters are from the immediate neighbors that abut this property. And then there are three other letters that were submitted for, for residents that live also in close proximity to this site. So, staff is supportive of it.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. We can just probably skip over the, the people in the, in the room making public comment, because there are none, other than the person you brought with you and the person you brought with you. If you want to come, what's that? They can come up and speak. So, see if there's any call-in comments. That's where I'm trying to get to. It'd be a good civic engagement. Come up and speak on all of them.
Yeah. She should put it in her college apps.
And we're checking for call-in comments right now. And there is no call-in comments for this request.
Excellent. Seeing no further comments, I close the public hearing. Before we move on to the finding of fact part, I did want him to, I did want to ask the applicant. So, it's an adult foster care facility, so what are the general ages that would be in that, in that home?
It would be anywhere between eighteen and eighty years old.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So whoever needs support, we welcome them.
I'm assuming some of them may be kids who aged out of regular foster, when I say regular foster care.
Yeah, at times we would have such, that population too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I don't know who's doing the finding of fact on this one. Do you want to make a motion on the finding of fact?
I move that the finding of facts for thirteen twenty-seven Sherwood Avenue shall include all information included in the notice of public hearing dated October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five and the agenda packet staff provided for this request. Forty-eight notices of public hearing were sent and five responses were received, which is as follows. Number one, David Cool, owner of six thirteen Dwight Avenue, in support. Jay Hickner, tenant of six thirteen Dwight Avenue Apartment Two, in support. Jack Page, owner of six seventeen Dwight Avenue, in support. Ramon Wagaman, owner of six twenty Dwight Avenue, in support. And Maureen M. Bunis, thirteen nineteen Sherwood Avenue, in support. A public hearing was held before the board. There were no public comments. And what was brought forward was that, from Mr. Isaac Ogola, was that the, the current property was used previously as a ten-bed facility. It has three full baths and is built out for ten residents. There are full-time live-in staff who are responsible for residents' safety and well-being, and they are licensed and overseen by the state of Michigan. They want to expand based on the previous facility's capacity because not doing so is an underutilization of the current, for what the, what the building is currently able to. Yeah, has capacity, thank you. So, and the current variance, the, this building has been in existence for over thirty-five years as a, an adult foster care facility, and it was historically legally conforming until the prior owner closed it in twenty twenty-three. And the current ordinance only allows for up to six residents. So, it's just, I mean, and the, and the, expanding it does not present a disruption to the neighborhood or correct. Thank you, the existing operations. Thank you, Remy. So, that concludes my finding of fact. Nice job.
Anybody second?
I second it.
There you go. Gary's your second. Let's take a vote on that, and then we can move to approve the request. All those in favor of accepting that as a specific finding of fact, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? None. Somebody want to make a motion about approving the request?
I move to approve ZBA number twenty-five dash eleven dash twenty at thirteen twenty-seven Sherwood Avenue.
Excellent. Any second?
I second.
Excellent. Thank you. So, I mean, I'm going to be in support of it. But I did want to say that I think the staff report is pretty right on with every one of these. Often I will take, and I know you take issue with them, everybody takes issue with them from time to time. I take issue with something in them, but I think this one is exactly right in what the criteria that we have to apply is made for this kind of a situation. And I just wanted to highlight in number one, where it talks about the literal interpretation enforcement would deprive the applicant for all practical purposes. And somebody might say, well, it's not depriving the applicant of all purposes. They could still put six in there and use it, but given that the facility is intended for ten, that is not a practical use of the facility. And I would say that if we don't approve it, we are depriving them really of the practical purpose that it was made for, and which it operated for, for thirty-five years, you said. But all the rest of them are correct, and that's why I'll be voting in favor of the request.
Well said.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Excellent. Seems like we're ready to take a roll-call vote. Mr. Eldridge.
All right, and thank you, Chairholder, for articulating, you know, the, the, the practical difficulty.
Oh, it's only because I said you did a good job here. No, but yes. No, I, I, I wanted to highlight that because when we were in that, what, the meeting yesterday where it was talking about deprived, what was it? It was like depriving it of all use, or its highest use. Well, its highest use isn't necessarily the most economic or whatever. And what I was trying to get at, thinking here, is that you still have uses, but if its highest use was intended to be as a ten-bed facility, limiting it to six is just silly, and it's a waste.
That's right.
So that would be limiting the, yeah. So anyway, thank you. I'll stop.
All right. Well, we will start with Vanden Homburg for the vote.
Yes.
Wark?
Yes.
Holder?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Urban?
Yes.
Han?
Yes.
That is approved six to nothing. And here, I thought we might have some that were controversial tonight.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You too.
Thanks for coming tonight.
I understand, we still have one other, we did the time extension. I think there's one other thing on the agenda, though.
Yes, we do.
Which.
We don't go.
Which is.
Yeah, I could do it. I could do it. I can.
Oh, yeah, you guys are doing Imagine Kalamazoo?
Okay, yes. We, we not done with this?
We already did that.
Okay, praise the Lord.
We were waiting, we, I figured that was going to be the least controversial, and it turns out none of them were.
It's nice.
I thought, I thought the, I thought the, I honestly thought the fence was going to get a little more pushback from somebody. Which is why I'm like, we.
Yes, initially, but I needed a little more.
It just was one of those, I'm like, that one might get a no vote, and if there's only four of us, we're going to need to have a fifth here.
Yeah.
So.
I felt really good about it. My understanding was that it was that little section.
Yes. That's what I said. That's what I told Joe. He was watching it at home, and he saw that we needed some people, so.
Well, good. It worked out.
I know Alan was ready. I mean, he mentioned last night that he was ready to fill in.
In the not, in the not-too-distant future, he'll just be here in, in every meeting.
It's got things to come up, you know?
Yep.
Life happens. Life happens.
Yep.
That's why I always say, I'm planning to be there because.
Yeah, you never know.
I can't, I mean, you know, I don't know what could happen on the way. I could win the lottery and disappear.
I'd still come to the meetings. What am I going to do? No, I would definitely be gone traveling a lot of the time. Yes. All right. And.
Alrighty.
All right. So. Okay, so here's. So, how this is. So, this is your, this is what you're looking at. That's what they're seeing.
But they didn't see that part. Okay. Alrighty.
So, yeah, so if you go through motions, you can obviously, and as needed, so you're, yes.
Okay.
And you can use, you can toggle there.
I'm going to speed through this because I've already wasted enough time. Here we are. Alright. Okay.
Yeah, we're putting the fridge in the bag.
Thank you so much for your graciousness. All right, are we, are we getting going, Pete? Can we, we can go? Alrighty. So, tonight, our zoning board, myself and Allison Han will be giving you a brief update on the strategic vision for Imagine Kalamazoo twenty thirty-five. So, we're there now. So, Imagine Kalamazoo twenty thirty-five is a city-led planning initiative. And the goal of it is to establish a strategic vision and municipal plan that will guide our city policies, investments, and development through twenty thirty-five. So, the presentation is an update, and it is about two-thirds completed. Alrighty. So, on the agenda, this was developed from public comment and staff review. We have Imagine twenty, Imagine Kalamazoo twenty thirty-five engagement and outreach as number one. Number two, the next aspect of it will be an analysis and initial results of the input that was received from the community. The strategic framework, a happy, healthy city, and then next steps. Alrighty. Imagine Kalamazoo twenty thirty-five, the planning started in, there's four phases. The first phase started in September of twenty twenty-four. And so, this is the timeline here. So, it appears as though with spring of twenty twenty-six, we will have adopted this new framework for our city and this vision. It's really exciting. And so, obviously, this has implications for the work that we do here on the zoning board. This is our timeline, and we've already adjusted it on multiple occasions to make sure that we're giving ourselves the proper space to engage the community. The city's master plan, excuse me, municipal plan does not expire until October of twenty twenty-seven. So, over the next few slides, you'll see an update on the outreach and engagement activities that are, that were undertaken in the first two phases. We have done at least four of these different aspects of this imaginative phase. We asked big-bro questions. What was transformation, excuse me, transformative over the last ten years? What remains an obstacle or a challenge? How do we use this information to look forward ten years? So from now and ten years from now, like twenty thirty-five, which is so wild to me, oh my gosh. Activities, I can't believe that, like, we're planning for that. Activities include empowering residents to have meetings in their, on their own and share results with the city staff, the online version of all the studies, meetings with the boards, Happy City book reads, so they had the Imagine Kalamazoo reads, met the author, came here in town, was all on the Kalamazoo Instagram and Facebook page. The Happy City book was a great success, and the number of members of our community who read the book or watched the TED Talk. It's not too late if you've not done either of these, and we're happy to share the link to the TED Talk. So maybe we can get that, Pete? I don't know how you'll provide that, link to the TED Talk. Will you guys put it on the ZBA website or Facebook Tonight, maybe? You'll put that on there? The link?
I, I can't put that on the Facebook.
Okay. Well, somebody.
I can circ, yeah, I can circulate that, I can find it and circulate it to board members.
Okay, we said it, so we should say, we should.
And if anybody wants to borrow the book, I have a copy, and I, I still have my copy if anybody wants.
Yeah. All right. Maybe you can tell us a little bit about it, Allison, too. Let me get up here. Okay, never mind. So the planning phase was using the information heard in Imagine It. The planning phase reviewed and discussed loosely, what was discussed loosely was organized into goals. There were five public meetings across the city, eight topic-specific meetings, and staff internal conversations. And it was asked, is this the right goal statement? Do we have enough information to define the goal and create the outcomes? All right? So those are the public meetings and the focus groups moving forward. There were four thousand two hundred and ninety-nine points of contact spanning over meetings on the go, pop-up engagement participation, participants, presentation attendees, public meeting attendees, surveys completed, partner meetings and attendees, Happy Book Read, Happy City Book Read participants, and youth art projects. So there were nearly forty-three hundred points of contact across many opportunities. The lens that we use to move from engagement to refinement, am I on eleven yet? Because it's almost your turn, ma'am. Data sources, target market analysis, national community survey, SS4A plans, city, community voices, excuse me again, forty-three hundred plus points of contact, best practices and staff expertise and stuff. So taking those things coupled with impactful data, best practices, staff expertise, and community voices, analyzing and reviewing input, this is, every process starts with the balancing of what we know, data and staff, again, staff expertise and best practices and what we wanted to learn from community, moving into our vision, purpose, values, and goals. So the community vision describes what the community will look like and feel like in the future, city staff and community collaboration, organizational purpose, it's why we do what we do. City staff has established that. The organizational values, shared expectations of ourselves and others, how we operationalize our purpose and implement the community goals. City staff has established that. And again, our guiding principles and goals, defining our future direction, direct resources and projects for the next ten years. And that's a collaboration between community and city staff. The vision statement, this is beautiful. In twenty thirty-five, all Kalamazoo neighborhoods are supported by sustainable, responsive, and accessible services that lift people up and bring our community together at every stage of life. That's a gorgeous vision. I love it. Moving forward. Organizational purpose. Our purpose is to provide essential resources, services, and exceptional customer service to ensure the well-being of our residents and sustainable growth of our city. And finally, my part's over. Our organizational values, integrity, learning, inclusion, customer service, accountability, teamwork, and safety. These were developed from staff conversations at retreats, and the internal organization will set us up for implementation success. This form, this forms the base from which we work. All righty, thank you.
Good job, Remy.
All right. And I will take over for the last of these slides. So our strategic vision framework, a happy, healthy city, we do not yet have the full document presenting a framework. We don't have the full strategic vision document yet, but it's coming to presenting the framework for a healthy, happy city. So aligning IK twenty thirty-five engagement to plan implementation. How do we go from engagement to plan implementation? Engagement, we talked about this Venn diagram already. It is the combination of lenses we use to go from raw information and input to comprehensive vision. Our strategic vision is the North Star, all other plans aligning with it. And in twenty thirty-five, we are spending more time to set us up internally to be successful with implementation. This is occurring in two ways. So in the CMO's office, so the, I'm sorry, there's too many acronyms in this, but the GSD, it lives in the CMO's office and looks at a plan, looks at planned actions and thinks about future budgets and capacity and how departments work together to achieve the community vision. And number two, department plans, they live in each department. Shorter-term plans look out over, out a few years to think through department-specific budget and capacity to achieve the community vision. GSD and DP work align. It is an extra layer of organization, but it is intended to allow us to hit the ground Here are the neighborhood next steps, the engagement process and the plan alignment. And we have got five guiding principles, like threads that weave their way through all of our work, starting from the strategic vision on down to all the other plans and work. These threads guide our work. The city of Kalamazoo is committed to arts and culture, arts, culture, and placemaking, community trust and safety, economic vitality, effective city operations, environment, housing, transportation, youth, and family. So adopting the strategic vision, the presentation of draft at city commission, planning commission presentation, and February approval of the final document, that's what's coming next. Then we have the design it phase, start, which starts this winter. So we'll have thirteen to fifteen neighborhood meetings, we'll have online activities, focus groups, and Imagine Kalamazoo reads. Keep growing and learning with us. So anybody can do the reading, and any of these other things, too. So again, we are here at the strategic vision and framework, framework and draft phase. And we are going into winter twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, the design it phase, as you can see. And that concludes the presentation. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Allison.
Nice job, Allison, Remy.
Excellent.
Very nice.
Yes, good job to both of you. And just to, like, reinforce where the strategic vision goals come into play, they are woven through so much of the work we do. It's actually a header in the staff report that I put together, together for each case that comes before this board, so that strategic vision alignment section, it's usually just a very short paragraph, but if there is an alignment with one of the strategic vision goals, I point it out right there. So, thank you.
Great.
Excellent. Meeting adjourned.